Ladies and gentlemen, it's 10 minutes after 5. This is Wednesday, August 27th. The Carson City Consolidated Municipal Planning Commission has now called a order. Call the roll, please.
Chair Boarders.
President.
Vice Chair Crone.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner DeChristopher.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Commissioner Pazelle.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, releasing a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, before we get started, I'd like to remind the commissioners that you're using the wireless mics, so you're going to have to physically press the button and get a green light, just like the ones down there, in order to be heard. The public is invited at this time to comment on any topic that relates to a matter over which this public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power, including any such matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. No action can be taken on any of these matters raised during this public, this period for public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing, seeing none?
On the items, on the agenda?
No, no, this is, you have a chance to speak on the items on the agenda.
Thank you.
Item number 5, for possible action to approve the minutes of July 30th, 2025. You should have at least had the minutes for late material. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented then? I'm sorry. Commissioner Brooks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pazelle, second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
All right. Commissioner DeGeneres, DeChristopher abstains. Item 6, meeting items, AB 2025-0190, discussion, discussion and possible action regarding a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors concerning an application for CC Nevada LLC for the abandonment of a 60-foot-wide public access easement approximately 7,803,799 square feet in size to allow for the realignment of the future extension of North Lampa Lane from Airport Road through the 23.9-acre parcel within the Lampa Ranch North Pacific Plan area and Zoned Multifamily located at 899 North Lampa Lane, S as a parcel, APN 010741-04. Heather.
Good evening, Heather Manzo, for the record. So this is another step in the process. You guys have already seen the zone change that got adopted by the board in early August. And you have also seen a few months ago, another abandonment kind of related to this area. This abandonment was applied for at the same time. However, staff asked the applicant to bring in some formalized applications to demonstrate that the abandonment can be supported. So we are here today with recommendations in the staff report based on those materials we've received. So to orient ourselves, this project is located to the east of I-580 and to the west of Airport within the Lampa Ranch North SPA. And so where the area of abandonment is, the ones in green are the ones that you saw a few months ago. That's been approved. This map really just demonstrates how they all kind of work together. And so the area that's being requested to be abandoned today is what's in red on this plan. And what that would have done is extended North Lampa Lane from its existing terminus now that comes off of Highway 50 East. And as it had originally been planned, it would have come on to Airport Road at Des Atoya Drive. Des Atoya is one of those local, single-family neighborhood roads. And so the applicant presented a plan to us over the past probably eight or nine months, showing a plan that would reorient the roadway further to the south that would tie in with Airport at Bud Eye. What this would do is take the roadway off of that local street and simplify the interactions with the single-family residential properties to the east, as well as kind of tying in some of the major east-west, north-south traffic on the east side of the freeway. So I've circled the southern portion of the area of abandonment, and we have a parcel map as well as some other applications that are in, that are being processed and are being reviewed now that would facilitate the realignment. The area that is offered for dedication shown here is a parcel map that's been applied for. And then in addition to that, there is a separate parcel that is to the southeast of this piece, which is offered for dedication by a separate document. That's not part of this project site. It's separate. And that's actually the, the SPA identifies a three-acre park site located on the east side of the freeway. This would serve as the three-acre park site, as well as providing that continued right-of-way to connect to Airport. So with that, we asked the applicant, because there have been so many moving parts with this process, to kind of simplify and really line out what steps they saw would be necessary in order to get to the end of the, you know, application process to be able to construct a project based on their vision. So where we're at today is we're at number four, five, six, and then seven. So four and seven are both those offers for dedication of the new right-of-way. Condition in the staff report requires that those rights of way be offered for dedication before the abandonment can record. And there's also the park parcel dedication offer that has been included as part of their package. So at this point, we're reviewing an abandonment request. Staff was able to make all of the necessary findings in order to support the request and make a recommendation for approval to the planning commission. And I haven't received any phone calls or emails related to this request from the public, and am happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. The applicant is also available tonight to speak with the commissioner at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. Can you put that last chart back up? That one? The way I understand what you just said and looking at this, this, the abandonment of what we're talking about tonight cannot be filed until this parcel dedication for the new road is approved. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is one of those situations where the abandonment request is actually for a roadway that's in our master plan. It's in the transportation plan. And so it's something that's essential and vital to the city. And so with this, yes, we're abandoning a roadway or a future roadway to the north of this, and there needs to be a connection to Airport to, in order to support the abandonment.
Okay. I've just, I'm just, everything is, the timing is all everywhere. So even though we, if, say we voted tonight to abandon this piece of road, and then for whatever reason, this road, the new road, didn't get dedicated, then the abandonment can't be filed.
Exactly right. The abandonment cannot be recorded until the offer for dedication has been accepted.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, I'm sorry.
Heather, I want to make sure I understand it. The proposed three-acre park is in the southernmost portion of that map, in the southeast corner. Do I have that?
Yeah, where that southeast label is located is where the park site is.
Okay. And the, is the abandonment recorded after both of these dedications are offered up, or only the one under consideration?
So abandonment, this abandonment is a right-of-way abandonment. So we're really not looking at the park site itself. It just so happens that there is a right-of-way that will be extended through the park site. And this is something that, so there's going to be a north and south dog park and a roadway going through. This is something that the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission has already blessed back in April. So we're only looking at right-of-way.
Right.
Whether the park site is offered for dedication before or after, it doesn't really matter. But yes, we do need to have the offer for dedication recorded before the abandonment can record.
For both parcels, or both dedications?
For both portions of right-of-way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pazelle?
Never get this right. My question is, if you abandon in totality the existing right-of-way, is there now a gap under the easement that's to be offered by, for dedication by the parcel map? Are we missing now a section between the southern end of the subject parcel all the way up to the northern end of the parcel?
So, no. The parcel map that's been submitted includes the southern segment, and it goes all the way up to where the terminus exists today. I just didn't provide that slide with this because it was too many pages.
Okay.
But yes, it'll, it'll provide a continuous right-of-way from 50 over to Airport.
Any other questions for staff? Yes.
This might be a Steven question, but when you talk about the overall system of roads, we're getting, we're looking at the elimination or the abandonment of this particular road that's going to go into Des Atoya, and this other road kind of swings down and ties into Bud Eye. Is that a part of the Campbell Plan? You had referred to that a little bit about the system plan. So I guess what I'm trying to do is, is this, this is, is this road an improvement over what was going to happen?
Steven Potte, for the record. So the, the right-of-way that's being abandoned right now, originally, staff did desire to have that tie-in at Bud Eye, just because it makes more sense to have a collector street tie into another collector. I think the existing master plan dictates the classification of the road. I don't know that it goes into the detail of saying exactly where that would tie in or where we desired it to. It just makes the most sense in terms of traffic volumes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just kind of continuing on, if I might, for a little bit. Again, this isn't necessarily a part of the abandonment question, because it's going to come obviously offered by dedication later, but the roadway through the park, it talks about a three-acre park that's being designated a north dog park and a south dog park. Is the roadway then, from a square footage standpoint, is the roadway then taken out of that three acres? Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. So that's something that I hammered through every time we had discussions about the park site, is that the net park area must equal at least three acres. So with the right-of-way that will come out of that, it's over three acres, and once that right-of-way is offered for dedication, the two park sites will equal 3.1 acres.
All right. Well, thank you. That, that's, thank you. I just would hate to see what the original idea was, is there's going to be three acres there for a park, and then all of a sudden you lose, you know, quarter or half an acre of it because of a road. Because that's root, that's, that's not what the original plan for this area showed. Because the original plan for the area did not have a road going through it.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, and it was a very important aspect, and it actually is part of what the SPA requires. So we did make sure that the applicant understood that, and they have presented a plan that complies.
Okay. Thank you with that. Now will, we see some of these dedications in these parcel maps coming back through, or does that go straight to the board?
So actually, parcel maps are administrative, so those are done and decided upon by a parcel map committee, i.e. the Community Development Director. And then the offer for dedication on the other component may or may not go straight to the board. Once the offer for dedication is accepted, and that means the roads are built, they meet city standards and all of that, then that will go to the board for acceptance, and they would decide at that time whether it meets city standards, and we would take the road at that point.
And you had one statement in here that was kind of puzzling to me in your discussion. Let's see if I can find it. I think I under, the impression I had reading your discussion on page two and three, does the, does, are there two different ownerships here, or is it all under one ownership?
So the 23-acre site where the subject abandonment area is, is on one parcel. The park site is owned by another party.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner DeChristopher?
My question was answered via Commissioner Crone.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions? The applicant is here.
Good evenings, Commissioner. Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers for the record.
The five conditions of approval are acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Any public comment? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion.
With your pleasure. Commissioner Pazelle, go ahead.
I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the abandonment of the public access easement based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Preston. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good luck with your project. What's that? Yeah, I know, isn't it crazy?
Item 6P for possible LU 2025-0310, discussion and possible action regarding the application from Maximilian Newman for a special use permit to allow for a fence to be located within the street-side yard setback that exceeds the allowable fence height on a property zone, single-family, 6,000, located at 1102 Armory Lane, APN 009-351-06. Heather.
Good evening again, Heather Manzo, for the record. So this property is located on the northeast corner of Armory and Baker, and this is really a result of a code enforcement process that, there was a fence that was erected about a year ago that, it doesn't require a permit, but it doesn't comply with codes. So what our code says is that when you're, when you're on a corner lot, your front is subject to certain standards in terms of height, and your street side, which is what Baker Drive is in this case, can be six feet tall as long as it's five feet away from the property line and has landscaping in between the property line and the fence. This fence has been constructed at property line, and so it doesn't comply with what our standards are. So it arose as a code enforcement case. This is, a special use permit is something that is available to an applicant to request for a taller fence than what's allowed within that, that five-foot setback area on the street side. And so the applicant has made the request for the special use permit to allow for the height to be six feet. I did want to note that if you visited the site, it does look like it's taller than six feet. That, the reason being is our code definition speaks to measuring height from the highest level of ground that is adjacent to the thing that's being measured. So in this case, it's the inside of the fence that is six feet, and the retaining wall on the other side doesn't count against that height limitation. With that, I did want to provide just kind of a before and after. The yellow points to the properties. The upper picture is going northbound on Baker. That was in August of 2023. And then I also wanted to provide kind of a street view of what westbound on Armory shows, and that's today's view with the fence installed. So with this, staff reviewed the request, and our engineering department identified that there's a water meter that's currently fenced within the fenced area.
Any other questions for staff? I'm sorry.
Heather, I want to make sure I understand it. The proposed three-acre park is in the southernmost portion of that map, in the southeast corner. Do I have that?
Yeah, where that southeast label is located is where the park site is.
Okay. And the, is the abandonment recorded after both of these dedications are offered up, or only the one under consideration?
So abandonment, this abandonment is a right-of-way abandonment. So we're really not looking at the park site itself. It just so happens that there is a right-of-way that will be extended through the park site. And this is something that, so there's going to be a north and south dog park and a roadway going through. This is something that the Park's Recreation Open Space Commission has already blessed back in April. So we're only looking at right-of-way.
Right.
Whether the park site is offered for dedication before or after, it doesn't really matter. But yes, we do need to have the offer for dedication recorded before the abandonment can record.
For both parcels, or both dedications?
For both portions of right-of-way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Puzel.
Never get this right. My question is, if you abandon in totality the existing right-of-way, is there now a gap under the easement that's to be offered by, for dedication by the parcel map? Are we missing now a section between the southern end of the subject parcel, all the way up to the northern end of the parcel?
So, no. The parcel map that's been submitted includes the southern segment, and it goes all the way up to where the terminus exists today. I just didn't provide that slide with this because it was too many pages.
Okay.
But yes, it'll provide a continuous right-of-way from 50 over to Airport.
Any other questions for staff? Yes.
This might be a Stephen question, but when you talk about the overall system of roads, we're getting, we're looking at the elimination or the abandonment of this particular road that's going to go into Des Atoya. And this other road kind of swings down and ties into Budai. Is that a part of the Campbell Plan? You had referred to that a little bit about the system plan. So I guess what I'm trying to do is, is this, this is, is this road an improvement over what was going to happen?
Stephen Potte for the record. So the, the right-of-way that's being abandoned right now, originally, staff did desire to have that tie-in at Budai just because it makes more sense to have a collector street tie into another collector. I think the existing master plan dictates the classification of the road. I don't know that it goes into the detail of saying exactly where that would tie in or where we desired it to. It just makes the most sense in terms of traffic volumes.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just kind of continuing on, if I might, for a little bit. Again, this isn't necessarily a part of the abandonment question because it's going to come obviously offered by dedication later. But the roadway through the park, it talks about a three-acre park that's being designated a north dog park and a south dog park. Is the roadway then, from a square footage standpoint, is the roadway then taken out of that three acres? Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. So that's something that I hammered through every time we had discussions about the park site, is that the net park area must equal at least three acres. So with the right-of-way that will come out of that, it's over three acres. And once that right-of-way is offered for dedication, the two park sites will equal 3.1 acres.
Alright, well, thank you. That, that's, thank you. I just would hate to see what the original idea was, is there's going to be three acres there for a park, and then all of a sudden you lose, you know, a quarter or half an acre of it because of a road. Because that's root, that's not what the original plan for this area showed. Because the original plan for the area did not have a road going through it.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, and it was a very important aspect. And it actually is part of what the SPA requires. So we did make sure that the applicant understood that, and they have presented a plan that complies.
Okay. Thank you with that. Now, will we see some of these dedications in these parcel maps coming back through, or does that go straight to the board?
So actually, parcel maps are administrative, so those are done and decided upon by a parcel map committee, i.e. the Community Development Director. And then the offer for dedication on the other component may or may not go straight to the board. Once the offer for dedication is accepted, and that means the roads are built, they meet city standards and all of that, then that will go to the board for acceptance, and they would decide at that time whether it meets city standards, and we would take the road at that point.
And you had one statement in here that was kind of puzzling to me in your discussion. Let's see if I can find it. I think I under, it, the impression I had reading your discussion on page two and three, does the, does, are there two different ownerships here, or is it all under one ownership?
So the 23-acre site where the subject abandonment area is, is on one parcel. The park site is owned by another party.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner DeChristopher.
My question was answered via Commissioner Crawl.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? The applicant is here.
Good evenings, Commissioner. Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers for the record.
The five conditions of approval are acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Nope, okay. Thank you. Any public comment? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion.
With your pleasure. Commissioner Puzel, go ahead.
I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the abandonment of the public access easement based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Preston. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Foes no. Motion carries.
Good luck with your project.
What's that?
Yeah, I know, isn't it crazy?
Item 6P for possible, LU 2025-0310, discussion and possible action regarding the application from Maximilian Newman for a special use permit to allow for a fence to be located within the street-side yard setback that exceeds the allowable fence height on a property zone, single-family 6,000, located at 1102 Armory Lane, APN 009-351-06. Heather.
Good evening again, Heather Manzo for the record. So this property is located on the northeast corner of Armory and Baker. And this is really a result of a code enforcement process that there was a fence that was erected about a year ago that, it doesn't require a permit, but it doesn't comply with code. So what our code says is that when you're, when you're on a corner lot, your front is subject to certain standards in terms of height, and your street side, which is what Baker Drive is in this case, can be six feet tall as long as it's five feet away from the property line and has landscaping in between the property line and the fence. This fence has been constructed at property line, and so it doesn't comply with what our standards are. So it arose as a code enforcement case. This is, a special use permit is something that is available to an applicant to request for a taller fence than what's allowed within that, that five-foot setback area on the street side. And so the applicant has made the request for the special use permit to allow for the height to be six feet. I did want to note that if you visited the site, it does look like it's taller than six feet. That, the reason being is our code definition speaks to measuring height from the highest level of ground that is adjacent to the thing that's being measured. So in this case, it's the inside of the fence that is six feet, and the retaining wall on the other side doesn't count against that height limitation. With that, I did want to provide just kind of a before and after. The yellow points to the properties. The upper picture is going northbound on Baker. That was in August of 2023. And then I also wanted to provide kind of a street view of what westbound on Armory shows, and that's today's view with the fence installed. So with this, staff reviewed the request, and our engineering department identified that there's a water meter that's currently fenced within the fenced area, so we don't have access to that right now. And then there's also what we call a vision or a sight-distance triangle that is a geometric that is identified based on the classification of roadway, the speed limit, and stop, you know, stop bars and things like that. So what the green is showing you is what that vision or sight-distance triangle is, and it just barely goes into where the existing fence is on that corner. So there are a couple of conditions in the staff report recommending that the fence be located to meet our standard detail around the water meter. So that would be two feet clear on all sides around the water meter and open from the street. So if we do have a water meter emergency or a water leak in that area, our staff can get in without having to knock on doors and waste precious time. And then with the sight distance, so when you are going westbound on Armory, the recommendation in the condition is to make sure that the fence is modified to meet code, to get the fence out of the sight-distance area so that there's a safe approach going westbound and that, you know, driving public can see both directions. I did want to note that you received some late material today from our sheriff, and he noted some concerns about the fence itself and some, some issues that they've noticed in this area in terms of safety for the driving public and pedestrian public. So that was placed on the record. I just handed a copy of that back to the applicant so that they're aware of the late material that was provided. So in our staff report, it is recommended for approval because code says SUP may allow for this if we can make findings. It's something that code does allow for the applicant to bring to the planning commission. Staff was able to make the findings. It was, it was a tough call to make. And I'll say, you know, driving around this area, there aren't really any corner lots that have six-foot solid fences that don't comply with code. Most of them have an open view chain link that's four feet tall. So, but I don't get to look at other properties when I'm making my decision. I'm looking at, is it going to affect the neighborhood as a whole in a negative way? And does it meet the compatibility findings and for safety and things like that? So with the, the, the recommended conditions that are in the staff report, staff was able to make the findings. But ultimately, it's up to the planning commission as to whether or not you can make those findings. So the applicant is available for questions at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Condition number five, that's probably for Stephen. What's the fence look like to comply to condition number five? We've got a line on a map, but I, I mean, reality, what, what's the fence going to look like?
Stephen Potte for the record, development engineering. So I wanted to point out, I'm glad you asked because our development standards call out a sight-distance triangle which measures with an I that's 15 feet back from the travel lane. So if you stop where that stop bar is, your I is not going to be at that place. So the, the way the development standard is written intends for you to stop at that stop bar and then kind of ease forward until you can see. So just putting that on the record to make sure it's clear, the intent isn't that you're going to be able to stop at that stop bar and see clear to where that, that point is, is on that, that image. So what our intent is, is going to be is to meet with the applicant out on site. Assuming this gets approved, we would actually go out and physically measure to that point and see exactly where on the fence it would have to be moved back. They'd essentially have to either create an angle on the, the corner of the fence or remove it, something of that nature to, to clear that sight distance.
Or lower it?
Lower it. Or, you know.
Okay, so it's kind of open-ended then?
Correct, yeah. Whatever they want to do to make it work, they could move the whole thing back a certain amount if they wanted to be a straight line. There's also the water meters, the second part of
Yeah.
Condition five, so.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Puzel.
Yeah, I just wanted to point on the same condition. Basically, we're not dictating any specific construction alteration of the fence itself. It's, it's a go out to the site, look at what the conditions are, and then have them provide you some options that you would be able to satisfy removing that obstruction from the sight-distance triangle. Thank you.
I guess I just want to have maybe a conversation with Heather a little bit. In my driving around the neighborhood, I, you, you'd alluded to this, that trying to find a lot with a six-foot tall fence without being set foot, five foot back in the neighborhood, okay, I couldn't find any. So I'm, I'm really concerned, at least from my perspective, related to finding number two. Being compatible, it preserves the character and integrity of adjacent properties and neighborhoods. So go through your, go through your rationale one more time for me related to why you think that is going to work within the neighborhood.
So as I said before, code allows for this request, for a special use permit to be filed to make the request for the six-foot tall fence. So with the special use permit request, we evaluate the findings. And staff was able to make each of the findings, as it's noted in the staff report, that, that it's not inconsistent with what has been done in other areas, that it can meet with the intent of code if the conditions are met as they're presented. And so that, that was really our rationale, is we were looking at the request on its face value, and we were able to make the findings.
Thank you.
It just, it, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Peterson.
I'm sorry. The other Mr.
You're fine.
Mr. Peterson.
The other Greg. So their, their application then is basically asking to leave the fence alone. Is that what they're saying, just to leave it the way it is, at six feet high on the property line?
That is what the application requests.
I think it might be a hazard, the way that it sits. I am willing to listen to a few more opinions here. But I think that what they're asking for is against code. It's black and white, in my opinion, but I'll wait to see what the others have to contribute. Thank you.
Commissioner Puzel.
Yeah, just to point out in staff's presentation, and it's not unusual in other jurisdictions I've worked in where the, the actual fence height is measured from the highest ground adjacent to the object that you're measuring to. As Heather pointed out, the, the fence on the interior, because of the, the ground raised by the stem wall, it, on the, on the interior of the lot, it is at six feet. So it, it does comply with code, in my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong. Really, the thing, the issues are too, the, the water meter being obstructed, and then the sight-distance triangle. So in, in, to Mr. Crawl's comment, you know, the, there's not enough staff in any jurisdiction to go out and make sure that all, all things are code compliant. The response is on a complaint-by-complaint basis, is my experience. So just, you know, I, I think what staff has done is looked at the circumstances on this individual property and come up with the best possible remedy based on the code, and then it's up to the planning commission to either, either agree with them or disagree with them. I mean, that's my take.
Yes. Commissioner Preston.
I just wanted to see if you got my name right.
Yes.
Okay.
Only, only have one a meeting. I already had mine.
Alright. So I'm just trying to understand this. So we're going for a special use permit because we're right on the property line, and that there was no area for vegetation between the property line, the sidewalk, because we require vegetation between the sidewalk and a fence, correct?
A five-foot setback from property line with vegetation in there.
Right, and this one is correctly on the property line.
That's correct.
Okay, so, because we've done other special use permits for this same type of a thing out at Lennar Homes. So we're looking at that going, okay, that's why we're going for the special use permit. But then if we approve this, then it is still subject to being able to deal with the traffic, the traffic visibility?
I'm sorry.
Okay. We're approving the special use permit to offset the idea that it was directly on the property line, not five feet away from the property line. That's why we have the special use permit. But then, is it also subject to the, the ability for Steve or whoever the representative is to go out there and say, okay, we have, want to put this visibility triangle in there and also access the water meter, correct?
That's correct. That's what condition five does, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, because usually it's, doesn't have all these other components. So what we're doing is just approving the ability to keep the balance of the fence, but it still, we'll probably be augmented.
It would have to be modified to meet the standard, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The, the difficulty is, it, it's, it's not for us to approve this and then it just to be open. I would rather it be closed. I would rather us say, yeah, we're going to move the fence one foot back for the next 20 feet, and that's going to be acceptable, and we're going to make a box for the, for the water meter. I, I have a problem just saying, yeah, we're going to look at it and we'll fix it. It, it's, and if, you know, frankly, if you look at the earlier pictures of the house, the, the ground was raised and the stem wall was put in, and the pad was there for the RV to park there. If you move the fence back five feet, you could still probably get the RV in there. It'd be cramped. But, you know, it, it's almost like it was self-inflicted. So, okay. Any other questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead.
One more. This happened to go through, as you mentioned, a code compliance, and we have in our packet minutes from those meetings, which I thought were real good minutes. And, and Heather Ferris was the one who was involved with that, weren't you, Heather? Did you have anything else you wanted to add based on? I thought the minutes were really good, but just think, was there anything else you wanted to add since you'd been involved with the, with the applicant during those code enforcement?
No, I don't have anything else to add at this time. I've reviewed Heather Manzo's staff report and didn't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson. Push the button.
Sorry. My voice carries, but not that well. So I, I agree with you. I'd like to get closure on this, instead of leaving it open-ended. Find a resolution, given the amount of time to make the correction. The visual triangle is important. Code says you can't have six-foot fence on the property line. From the sidewalk, it's actually another 16 inches because those are two cinder blocks stacked. It's another 16, so you're looking at almost seven and a half feet from the sidewalk. I think that the visual triangle has a lot to play in this. The modification, there's, I'm sure we could come up with some suggestions, but we would have to do that in, with agreeance with the applicant so that we had resolution at the end of this thing. Either move it back five feet or make it to the correct height and be done with it.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
They are.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Tom Newman. I'm Max's father. He's, he's still busy working today. There are a young couple who came into Nevada. They're working, bought a house, looked at the neighborhood, you know, need a little fix-up, fix-up, looked at fences around, tried to do what they'd seen other neighborhoods. If you look at Roop and Sonoma, the intersection there, the fences come directly out to the sidewalks. They came in, bought a house, tried to kind of fit neighborhood, get a new place for their family to grow up. So this is what they started. These, these issues have, have came up, and we've learned now this four-foot fence. And if you think about a four-foot fence, would you like one of your kids playing behind the four-foot fence? Or would you like to have them a little safety? All of these things have transpired. I thought we'd kind of worked out something with the planning commission here to reset this angle to allow the site perimeter. And that was something that was, you know, acceptable with the planning department. Understood on your side, you'd like to know exactly where it is, and it's done. We would too, because we wouldn't want to go out and move it and then have you come back and go, six inches more, you know? That's why we, we've talked to them. If they can set us a point, we will set that post at that line. We, we don't necessarily want to ourselves arbitrarily, again, choose a line and find out that this isn't what's acceptable. You know, we, we've tried to look what was in the neighborhood and just go with, okay, looks good, and others, others have something similar, and, and, hmm.
Well, here.
After a couple of years of home ownership, here they are.
So.
Getting to deal with it.
There, there are five conditions of approval. Are they all acceptable to you?
Yes, they, they were. They'll, they'll set us a line, you know, when we came up with, you know, many of the things we, we questioned of, you know, how quick you'll have to have access to that water meter. But if this is what's required, we'll set the fences up and make, make it work where, you know.
The difficulty I have, the difficulty I have. The difficulty I have, sir, is, is that if, you know, if, if they go out there and they, and that line is significantly more than you thought it was going to be, then, then we're right back to where we started from. Before you put the fence up, there was a fence at the rear edge of the house that locked off the backyard. And I would suspect you probably don't want the child to play around the motorhome anyway. And that's probably a fence back there now anyway, or there should be, to keep the kid away. So the question is, on this side yard, where you, where they obviously want to park their RV, you know, they've raised the land and made it flat. But if, if you complied to the five-foot setback, you could still park your RV there. And you would solve the site problem, and you would solve the neighborhood problem. And it just, it, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brooks.
Just to be clear, the, it sounds like your son. Did your son build this fence when he came in? And how long ago was that? Okay, okay. And he did it himself, or did he hire a contractor? Which one? Okay, thank you so much.
And I'm sorry.
Commissioner DeChristopher.
Thanks. Yeah, and that was going to be one of my questions typically with a fence installation. You have a permit, which then gives you the information when you are on a corner lot? I know, sorry, it's my voice. And Heather, this might actually be for the city. Just having recently gone through it, I don't know if it's because of my area that HRC over, you know, they're the first one I go to. But when you put a fence, when you install a fence, would it not require a permit, given the location?
So you're exactly right. The reason that you had a process to follow is because you're within the historic district. Outside of the historic district, there's not a trigger for a permit for a fence.
So he wouldn't know at that time of installing?
Not without asking the city first, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Preston.
My question is, is that I appreciate that, you know, they've come to, to us with a special use permit. However, we don't have the actual final plan. So my question is, is why wasn't that resolved and incorporated in the special use permit before it came here?
I'd be happy to answer that question. So we did sit down with the applicant because we wanted to talk them through what engineering's findings and recommendation was. And what I asked them to do is don't make any changes until the planning commission has seen your request and has approved it. Because you're the granting body, it's not staff. And so we wanted to make sure that whatever is before you, you have a way to put your hands on it, make sure you feel comfortable with it if it's approved. And so the applicant has a very clear picture on how to move forward. And I did want to note, I know Chair Borders had mentioned, you know, maybe moving a fence five feet or something to that effect. There's a code compliance perspective, which is the sight- which is the site distance triangle that engineering works with. Your late material, the comment from Chief Furlong, actually really is about functional visibility. So he expressed concerns that the fence, it's probably not just a little bit of the corner. It's probably that there's a functional component to this where there is a safety hazard that he's identified. He didn't specify what would work and where it should go and all of that. He did provide the comments and feedback to note that he was concerned with the fence where it's at today.
Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Borders. I have a recommendation. I mean, I know to move that fence line back five feet would cost you a fair amount of dough. I mean, you got posts. You'll basically almost have to demo the fence. You might be able to save the majority of it. But I suggest if you just drop the height to the, you know, the legal height of what it would be on the property line. Is that three feet? Do you guys know?
Yes, it's three feet.
Three feet. So if you knocked it down to three feet on Baker, you keep the posts, you know, you keep the planks, and the visual triangle works. You might have to modify your gate because that part of the fence that faces armory is still high. But, and if the RV is there, I don't think the kids are going to be playing in that part. That just means that's such, that's a small piece of side yard, you know? But I think that's probably one of your most economical corrections instead of pushing it back five feet.
Approximately the height of your desks out there.
Well, if you're three feet, if you're three feet on that leveled-out spot on top of your cinder blocks, you're like almost four and a half feet at the sidewalk. Not quite five, but it's still pretty tall. And you're within the legal bounds.
Mr. Peterson, I don't think it's productive for us to try and engineer it.
Yeah, I understand. I know. I'm just trying to... It's just an idea.
Yeah, I came in with the, kind of the understanding that the planning department had kind of had, looked at the site triangle, and that worked for them. If that was acceptable with you, that would work with us. They need to find the exact engineered point.
Yeah, but our problem is, we don't know if that's going to be acceptable to you. When they get out there and get done and start painting up the fence and making marks on it, you may not like it. Well, okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the audience who may be listening, I just want to clarify, and Heather did this at the beginning, but there's been a lot of discussion. So I just want to do a reset on where we are procedurally. Procedurally, we're looking at a special use permit. You're allowed to have a fence that exceeds the height limitation if you can make the seven required findings of facts for a special use permit. Only the planning commission has that authority. The staff does not have the authority to grant that. The staff makes a recommendation to the commission. So any implication that, based on the staff's recommendation, this could be approved is simply not true. All we do is make a recommendation to you, and we've done that. What has also happened since the release of the staff report is the sheriff has reached out on this matter and expressed concern about safety vis-à-vis visibility. The recommendation, the staff report relative to the site triangle does not necessarily address the sheriff's concern. It addresses a code requirement, but we don't know in the field whether or not that would indeed satisfy the safety concerns raised by the sheriff. So that's new information. You've yet to have a public hearing on this. You haven't called for public comment. So I don't want anybody who might be here to talk to the commission to think that the commission is simply here to rubber stamp the staff's recommendation because that's simply not the case. Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks.
Hope's comment took care of my question.
Okay. All right. Any further questions to the applicant? Any public comment? Come forward, please. Now, come over here. Sit down. Sign in and state your name.
My name is Sharon Donaldson.
Move the microphone closer to you. There you go.
I live within two blocks of this.
Yes.
I also have some pictures for you to really see what is going on. It's very, very unsafe. This morning, I met with Sheriff Furlong. He brought in two of his supervisors who do the traffic and, pardon me, take care of the operations of the streets with his group. I have my pictures to show you exactly what we face. We have to get out into the northbound lane of Baker to see if anything is coming from the north because we have this huge fence. You can't see. It's unsafe, and it needs to follow the law.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to have you look at these because it's far better than anything I think you've got up there.
You give them to Heather, and then we can make them part of the record? Any other comment?
Well, I just would like to see the fence down to the height it is supposed to be.
Okay.
No variance because we can't see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you sign in on the sheet? Sir, are you ready? Comment. Okay. Paul Simpson, 2501 Brentwood, which is just south of the Brentwood Armory Corner. That's where I live. Okay. This Saturday, my wife and I went to Costco, which means we went out Armory and wanted to turn left onto Baker. And like Sharon commented, in order to see oncoming traffic coming from the north, we had to pull at least halfway into the northbound lane. And the fact that they have, yes, it's a six-foot fence, but it's on top of two layers of cinder block, which puts it over seven feet. So something needs to be done to adjust that. And I have seen fences where they've got the maximum height for the bulk of the fence, and then they stair-step it down as you get closer to the intersection. That would fix the problem too. Because I want to be able to see oncoming traffic. And that's the summation of my comments. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay. Back to us. I tend to agree. I went out there and tried, from that street, and tried to look around the corner, and you can't see.
Yeah, and that's one thing I wanted to say. I do appreciate from the applicant that they're concerned about safety for the child. Totally get that. But there's also the safety for the children and other people on the exterior of that fence. And I know I was sitting here trying to think of the word, and he brought it down. When it steps down, just going with my personal experience, I knew I had to go four feet, but then there were areas in the back I could go higher. So I think there's a way to accomplish both and also meet the city's need to have access to the water meter. But it comes back to the same question of, "Okay, then what exactly are we approving on a special use permit when we don't have the specifics of what's going to be accomplished?"
We have the same problem with... We have the same issue where we built a fence, found out that, you know, if perhaps the neighbors had just talked to neighbors, we would have resolved this before the city council and just figured out things. But...
Chair, I have a question.
If we can get it to work out, you know, that's...
Sir, we're not taking any more testimony.
Yeah.
Question is, can we add that then as a condition if we wanted it? Because I believe, and I apologize, I don't have the code in front of me. But isn't that what it stipulates on a corner lot? That you have a different height in that triangle for visibility purposes? So that really the solution could be just changing the height of the fence?
So what the code says for a property that has a street side or that secondary frontage that's not part of the front is that you can have a six-foot tall fence if it's setback from the property by five feet. And then otherwise, for a solid fence, like the wood fence that's there now, it's limited to three feet tall.
Commissioner Brazil.
Thank you. I just want to say that I think staff is working with the property owner, and I think that's what Condition 5 does. It allows staff to go out into the field, city staff to go out in the field and actually determine how far back that fence has to be pulled back from the site distance triangle rather than having them either continue this item until sometimes they can go out and come back with a specific plan. I think it allows them the flexibility to do that in the field and possibly come up with some solutions that haven't been thought of and won't be thought of here at this meeting. Thank you.
Well, you know, the other concern I have is that this has been adjudicated twice and without a solution that's in favor of the homeowner. And the last thing that was, was that they could come and get a special use permit, but there's no guarantee that that's going to be successful. I'm just having trouble making the findings. So, yeah, there's 100 different variations that we could probably come up with, but that's not our job. And I just... I just, right now, I can't approve this.
Commissioner Cor... I'm kind of in that same boat. I'm probably from a little different perspective than my colleagues here. You know, they've been talking about site triangles, which are important, so don't get me wrong. I'm not disagreeing with anything you've said. But I still think it goes back to compatibility with the neighborhood. And that's really where I'm struggling with finding number two, being able to make that. Because that fence on that sidewalk in relationship to the other properties within this development or this area just strikes, sticks out to me as not compatible. It sticks out like a sore thumb. So I, like you, maybe not being able to necessarily... But that's where I'm hanging my hat, is I can't do finding number two. The other ones I could probably live with, but I can't do number two.
Okay. Well, just to be clear, I can't get two or three. Any other comments?
Just for the record, I can't meet two or three either.
Commissioner Brooks.
I suspect I can't sway the stated opinions of my fellow commissioners. I'm less concerned about compatibility with the neighborhood because the neighborhood complaints that we heard tonight are not based on compatibility, but are based on safety. I get that that's a concern, but it wasn't a concern. On safety, between our comments, staff's comments, the owners' comments, we've heard several different options. I assume, and this is a question for Heather, I assume there is some sort of clawback on this SGP if we can't come to a conclusion. You know, there's a time limit in here. And if a mutually agreeable solution can't be reached within a timeframe, then the SGP expires? Or do I have that wrong?
So are you assuming it gets approved? Or are you talking about what happens now?
I also mean if it was approved and moved forward, and then the property owner could not come to agreement with staff about what to be done in that timely manner, that something happens.
So there's a 90-day clause in this? Yeah.
So I suppose what I'm saying is that I have faith in the ingenuity of staff and the range of options available that, you know, short of the property owner simply not acting in a timely manner, it seems like this will get resolved.
Well, or the alternative is to delay it and let them come back with something more concrete. I don't know that that gets us anywhere.
Well, I think there are three options. They can either go forward, and, well, four. Go forward and comply with the conditions, and they come up with a mutually satisfied arrangement. Two, they can move forward if they get approval. Move forward, meet on-site, not come to a mutually satisfied understanding. And if not completed within 90 days, the approval expires. Or they could come back and, if it's, appeal that specific condition. Another option is they can, if they're denied at the planning commission, they can appeal the planning commission's decision to the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It can be. To your point, Chair Borders, we received Chief Furlong's comments today. And staff hasn't had a chance to even evaluate what that might mean in terms of the fence that's there. So if there were a continuance allowed and the applicant agreed to that, that would allow time for staff, both the sheriff's office and Public Works, to go out and meet with the applicant at the site to find out what exactly the right choice might be and bring it back forward to the planning commission.
Yeah. Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, I think that that might probably be something to consider because I would have to deny it on the fact on condition of use number one. The project shall be constructed and/or developed substantially in accordance with any site plans that are approved by the planning commission. We have no site plan to approve. There's nothing, including any modification that's made by imposition of additional condition by the planning commission. Again, nothing from nothing is nothing. So I won't be able to approve it. I would definitely consider going ahead and doing a... Tabling it until actually something is drawn up and we have something to see, vote on, and for the public to go ahead and discuss and for you to actually agree on. Because we're not agreeing on anything. So, thank you.
Well...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Two things. One, I just, three of you express concern about compatibility. So it looks like you're talking about safety and not compatibility. So I just want to point that out. Secondly, if you choose to continue it, it's my recommendation you continue to your September meeting. We've heard testimony about safety concerns. We've heard about safety concerns from the sheriff's office. I would expect that any remedy to address the safety concerns would be completed within the next, I'd say, two weeks. It shouldn't be that hard. Thank you.
Yeah. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion?
I agree. That's a great idea.
Do you need a motion to table?
No, we need to. We need to find out if the applicant will continue this until September.
I've sat on a board too. I'd make a motion to, you know, continue it until that line's set. Because, as you know, I don't want to do as... know, I don't want to do a line, you don't want to agree to a line that's not set, we're both on the same spot.
Heather, you have...
Well, so the property owner needs to accept the request, and so...
Is your daughter in law?
I hope so.
Okay. I can go get her.
Yeah, I would like to get that acknowledgement from the property owner.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Stephen, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, just wanting clarification from the commission in terms of what deliverables you're looking for moving forward. The image that you see on the screen right now is about the, as detailed as I can get with like a satellite image. We could go out on-site and actually mark the fence so that you could physically go out and look at where that standard would put the mark, and that could maybe give you an idea of...
Well, that would be, that would be what...
I actually envisioned a physical improvement in the next two weeks to address the safety concern, not a graphic. So I'd be curious for the commission, we have an unsafe situation.
Yes. And, which is different than the sightline discussion.
No, that is the sightline discussion.
No. Yes.
In addition to...
Commissioner Preston?
Thank you. In addition to the safety for the visibility, wouldn't we also consider it the safety for the accessibility of the water meter? So both of those would tie hand in hand.
Sorry.
Just so you know, we're having trouble coming up with a way to approve this S U P. There's some safety concerns, some traffic concerns that we need to get resolved, and the question was whether or not we could, you would be acceptable with a continuance to September. No, you turned it off.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michaela, on record, I would agree to that of continuing this conversation in September and getting more actual facts and actual planning.
And then, Hope, how do we address the safety issue?
Well, I would suggest that you ask the applicant to modify the fence to create the visibility at the intersection that would prevent the situation we have right now, and that improvement should not only be consistent with development engineering's site triangle, but it will have this extra requirement of satisfying the concerns of the sheriff, is what I would suggest, because we know, we just had testimony that we have an unsafe situation. Our sheriff rarely wades in on things, and he's weighed in.
Given I've only seen the sheriff once, and I saw him at noon today, I would like maybe another perspective, just to get an average consensus, maybe? I understand the concern of the visibility of the fence. Also, speeding is a huge safety in that neighborhood, too. I don't know if you guys hit that on the head either, but...
Well, Hope, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know the mechanism that we're talking about.
Okay, you're trying to understand what the improvement will look like, so are you looking for just a graph, a different drawing then of what it will look like as opposed to something in the field?
No, I don't think a drawing would help us, but I think...
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that you'd like them to make the improvement, and then, but as Commissioner DeChristopher said, it would be sort of stepping down. So it'd still be out of compliance with code, because it wouldn't be set back five feet. There could be a portion that was taller, but not the portion that's near the intersection, is what I'm hearing. Heather, I may get that wrong, so I invite you to correct me on that.
In my mind, I wonder if that would alleviate the sheriff's concerns. I didn't speak directly with him, and so I do think that the fence needs to be modified in a manner that's going to ensure safety and comply with the engineering code for clearance from the site distance area and the water line. So I almost wonder if the applicant shouldn't meet with Public Works and the sheriff's office to discuss that and then make modifications based on the recommendation and come back in September to the planning commission.
Okay. Would that be acceptable? Acceptable to you? You have to say yes.
Yes, sorry.
All right. Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Chair.
You had your hand up.
Yeah, I did, and I pressed my little button. Yeah, I just believe that if they became code compliant, and this is going to get shot down tonight anyways, that would resolve the whole thing.
Yeah.
Five foot back are correct height on the property line, and that would address our safety issue and that kind of thing.
If, Heather, if we turn this down tonight, and they've already been through two appeals that have said they have to be in compliance, then they have to be in compliance.
Any request for a special use permit that the planning commission decides upon can be appealed by the applicant or a member of the community, so they do have a remedy to request and appeal to the Board of Supervisors if they chose.
But if they don't, then they have to make the fence compliant?
If they don't get approved and they don't appeal, then yes, the fence would either need to be in compliance, or we still have a code enforcement case that would be pursued through that avenue.
What's your pleasure?
Vote?
On what? You want to make a motion?
I will.
All right.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
To deny. Could I pass this on?
If you got somebody that'll do it for you. Here.
I'd like to make a motion to continue L U 2025-0310 based on the inability to make the required findings of facts and subject to, what do we do it? Subject to a...
I'm sorry, is this a motion for continuation or a motion for denial?
It's a motion for, it's a motion for continuation, because we can't deny what we don't know.
Okay, well, there were some people prepared to deny, but if you'd like to make a motion for continuation, you can just make a motion for continuation to the meeting of September, do we have that date? 24th?
With the consent of the applicant.
With, based on the consent of the applicant, on the record, the applicants already consented with the understanding that the applicant will make physical improvements to the fence, to the satisfaction of the city engineer and the sheriff. All that said, it will still be before the commission unless they come into compliance for a special use permit, and there's no assurance you will get to yes on that.
Perfect. Should we do that one? So, okay, do you want me to reiterate it? Are we going to...
No, I just see if there's a second for that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Second?
All right. Commissioner Brooks? Go ahead.
You know, sometimes, sometimes just saying, saying no is maybe the right thing to do, but I'm certainly willing to take a look at this and give this continuation a chance. I just, this has been dragging on and on and on, and sometimes it's just nice to say no. I just don't think you can get there. Now, if the other commissioners believe they can, then that's fine, and I'm willing to support this motion. But I just, sometimes you just reach a point after two administrative hearings, now a planning commission meeting, and we still aren't there. You know, I'm hopeful that the commission, with their motion, this will work, and I'll support it, but I'm just, it's just, sometimes you just have to say no.
Mr. Preston?
I would like to add that these people actually came forward and paid $2,500 to actually come up with a solution, and that's what I think that they came here to do, was come up with a solution. So I would like to give them that opportunity to go forward until September.
Can we, can we put a contingency on this motion or whatever it is to make sure that some of this compliance happens in the next two weeks?
I think that was what was articulated and agreed to, and I think it's important to do that, in fact. And we do still have an active code enforcement case, so I'll remind everyone of that, and there's, we certainly can continue to pursue and escalate the code enforcement. They are before you, but the hearings officers made a decision. And again, I want to reiterate, even with the continuation, it's still before this commission if they don't come into compliance, and this commission may not get to yes.
I think it's just as easy, like you said, to say no.
But I think Commissioner Preston does bring up a good point. It's, it is, yeah, she, I think she spoke really well to it, so I'm more than happy to, I don't want to repeat it, she just did, I'll support the motion.
All right. Any other comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Just me? No?
Oh, you're a present?
Motion carries. L U, Item 6C, L U 2025-0309, discussion and possible action regarding the application of D R Horton for a special use permit to allow for a 92-unit, single-family residential townhome project within a commercial zoning district, C R R C P located on the southeast corner of Silver Oak Drive and G S Richards Boulevard, Assayer's parcel number A P N 007461-19. You want to do the other one, too, or just one at a time?
Yes, please, if we could take both at the same time, but we'll be taking separate motions.
Yeah. Well, and Item 6D, which is S U B 2025-0308, discussion and possible action regarding a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors concerning an application for D R Horton for a tentative subdivision map known as Silver Oak Townhomes on a 92-lot, single-family-attached residential subdivision on the property within the Silver Oak planned unit development and zoned R C P on the southeast corner of Silver Oak Drive and G S Richards Boulevard, Assayer's parcel number A P N 007461-19. Heather?
Good evening. So this project is on the southeast corner of Silver Oak and G S Richards Boulevard. It's a 6.2-acre site. The planning commission, probably back in 2022, saw a request for a much more dense multifamily product, which was approved, and there have been a couple of time extensions after that, after that timeframe. The S U P, as it is today, would expire in January of 2026. However, there is a condition recommended that if this request is approved, that it would sunset the approval of the multifamily project, so we don't have multiple approvals for development on the same piece of land. So with this request, we're looking at 92 single-family attached units with a townhome product. Access would come from G S Richards and Silver Oak, or sorry, two access points from G S Richards, and there's the main north-south roadway. There's two distinct housing types here in terms of the driveways. So the west side has a full-length driveway, and then the product to the east has five-foot driveways accessed off of the private alleys. Everything within this development is proposed to be private. And with that, I did want to just provide you with some elevations that were provided in the application packet. These do conform with our design standards for residential development. And then I wanted to speak really about the driveway. I did have, we don't have a public comment, but I did have a member of the public contact us to ask questions about the project. After receiving answers from both myself and Public Works, they felt satisfied with the answers they received. But one of the concerns that they had shared with us is that on those properties that only have parking within the two-car garage, those garages are necessary to meet the parking standard that we have adopted with code. So with that, staff is recommending, on the second line there, that a new condition be added. In addition to that, I did become aware of a repetitive condition. So Condition Number Five under the special use permit recommended conditions is almost exactly the same as Condition Number 17, and so I would recommend that Condition Number 27 be deleted with a motion, and that a new 27 be established to require that those residences that have garage spaces that are required for meeting code be limited to only for parking instead of being used for storage. That will help to alleviate, hopefully, future concerns about parking outside of the garage area. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the request, and the applicant is available for any questions you may have. And I do believe that she had a brief presentation if the planning commission would like.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Crone?
I had a couple. The, can you go back to the sight plan? Heather, thank you. One of the questions I have is the distance between the, for the units that are running east and west and have the driveway in between them. I'm a little concerned, based on other projects around town, that the distance in there is adequate enough for people to want to park two cars in there, because trying to move a vehicle around in there and getting two into the garage, I think will be a bit of a challenge. So where is staff on that?
Stephen Potte, Development Engineering, for the record. There is a condition that requires widening of those little alleys to a minimum of 26 feet wide, and that comes from our standard details for a parking lot, that's the minimum drive aisle width. So the way those are drawn right now, they don't quite meet that, but when we looked at the space between buildings and the driveways, et cetera, it looked like there's sufficient space to get the little bit of extra width that they would need to meet that standard.
Okay. So are you saying it's a condition or the code? You've answered my question, I'm just, I'm just being trying to understand, so are we enforcing a code requirement, or is it a condition?
Sorry, I misspoke, it's not a condition, it's just a requirement of our development standards.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just, you answered your question correctly, I just wanted to be sure I understood what that was. The other thing, too, is that I wanted to maybe have Heather talk to is related to the density issue. I think, I think in the staff report, I think you lay it out pretty well, but I think for the public to understand that, you know, the amount of the density that we talked about with a multi-apartment complex is different than what's being proposed here. And not only is we're talking about density, but we're also talking about height issues as well. It was, I think, a three-story or so apartment complex down to a two-story townhouse. So can you address that just for the public record, please?
Yeah, I'll speak to the height first, so I don't forget. So I did look back at the previous approval, and the height for the apartments was at 43 feet, and it was a three-story product. That was approved, so we were able to make findings at that time for that. However, your point is well-taken, that this is a much different project, the density... this is a much different project. The density in this project, it's, you know, the two-story buildings instead of three stories, and the density is about 13 dwelling units per acre less than the previously approved project.
So we're, we're moving from a, a development that's reduced in height, less density, which also then impacts less traffic, correct? You would have less traffic, I'm assuming, versus, versus less utility fees. And that was the other question I had for Stephen, was that the prorata shares that are in the report are different than what was in the multi-apartment complex one. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, because of the, the decrease in, in density, it also decreased those prorata shares.
So less water would be used and less, and less need for treatment of sewage?
Correct.
Are these individually metered?
I believe, I, I don't know that we've gone into that level of detail. So on other projects around town, there's been a mix of results. I think the intent was to meter each individual unit, yes.
Okay. Mr. Preston?
One of the things that I do not see on here is areas for trash. And since we ended up with that situation up off of Draco with the individual trash containers, or are we going to have combined? Because I really don't see, I mean, I don't see how. Our waste management people are pretty darn good, but to be able to come in here and get all of these trash cans, if they're individual trash cans, there's not even a place to stage them.
That's a great question. And the applicant actually provided with their application a will serve letter from Waste Management, and it included a plan showing where the trash bins would be located, each pickup. However, the applicant does have, in a very brief presentation, if you'd like, that plan. I didn't include it in my slides, but they do have the Waste Management plan that was approved in terms of the garbage pickup, if you'd like to see that.
Okay. Momentarily. Commissioner Bussell?
Heather, could you put up the recommended, new language for condition 27? My concern with these types of conditions is who's going to do the enforcement on this? So I'm, I'm just, have you thought about that for long-term? Thank you.
I have. Because this is a single-family development, and there's already going to be an HOA, we did have a conversation with the applicant team before we made this recommendation to you, to make sure it was something that they felt they could implement. And the HOA will take on that responsibility, and I do believe that the applicant was already moving forward with that plan as well.
If, in fact, they have an HOA, don't we, should we not, we used to acknowledge that.
The standard conditions for this request have changed with the code update. And that's really to eliminate muddying the water with what implementation tool is being used for a project. We have run into situations in the past where it's, our conditions have held up projects because of a different tool that they were using.
Okay. Condition number 22. And Stephen explained that to me. Number four says, "The 10-foot electrical and communication easement requirement incorrectly per document 355322, new easement to be granted."
So in the, the plans that are provided by the applicant, there's two utility easements crossing the project, bisecting it, and they're conflicting with the proposed building. So those would just need to be abandoned and altered potentially to a different location.
So, so we're saying that those easements must be abandoned? Then. It's calling for two easements, four and five.
Correct.
They should be relinquished?
Well, it's calling for those easements to be relinquished. Condition 22, right?
Yes.
So prior to the issuance of a site improvement permit, electric and communication easement shown on S1 as easement legend callout four and five must be relinquished. So that, that calls for the elimination of those two.
Okay, but one of them says it's going to eliminate anyway. So we're eliminating an elimination? Number five says electrical and communication easements to be relinquished.
So.
And we're saying number five should be relinquished?
We're essentially agreeing with the plan that says that that needs to be.
Okay. Then why do we call it out?
I, I feel like, in speaking with the staff person that prepared those comments, it's because they're shown and they do cross under proposed buildings, so we wanted to make sure we solidified that on the record.
Any other question for staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner, did?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, Heather, I just wanted to confirm, similar to the first applicant for this, one that we would presumably sunset if we accept this one. This current applicant is also making the contributions towards the intersection, North Carson and Silver Oak, as well as to the sewer, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That remains the same. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
When you are working, let's see, on page six of your, six? Oh, yeah. Open space and landscaping. Can you walk through that for me on page seven? You've talked about different square footages and how they apply, and I wasn't quite following you related to, because there's open space, does all open space get landscaping? Or does the landscaping only have to happen on a portion of this? I just couldn't follow you, so if you could.
Are you talking about the staff report comments in number seven or number six?
Both.
Okay. So number six calls for open space, and there's two different standards that are identified in the A, B, C, and D. The only one that's applicable to this would be the one for single families, so it's C. And what it says is that for single-family residential developments, there needs to be a minimum of 250 square feet of open space provided for each unit as private open space or common open space. So it can either be behind a fence and exclusively used by that unit, or it can be provided in common open space where the whole development can utilize that space. What I did is I broke down what the requirement would be and what the applicant's proposing. So the requirement is for providing 23 square feet, or 23,000 square feet of common open space, whether it be private or, or common. And what the applicant's proposing is 14,298 square feet of private and 44,000 and some change of common open space. And then under number seven, the landscape requirements, that, that they need to meet Title 18, Division 3. So my comment is that the landscaping is required at a minimum of 20% of the site's impervious surface, excluding building coverage. So that comes out to a calculation of 18,600 square feet of landscaping. And what they're showing, including the common open space area, is over 64,000 square feet. So really, all those two are showing is that they're providing more than what the code would require that they provide.
All right, thank you. Okay. You ready for the applicant? Did you have a chance to see the new 27?
I did. Just for the record, Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers, on behalf of D.R. Horton, the applicant, in this tentative map. We did review all of the conditions of approval, including the new condition number 27, and we agree with all of them.
All right, thank you. And you want to tell us about garbage, right?
I would love to tell you about garbage. Maybe just, it's the very end of my presentation, Heather.
Well, you can go through it, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'm happy to start with the garbage, and if you have other questions, right at the end. You were right. Yep. Okay. So I appreciate the question about the trash totes. I have been in front of this commission previously with similar products, so I was prepared for this discussion. And as a result of those earlier conversations, we did reach out to Waste Management early on in the layout of this project to make sure that what we were proposing was acceptable to them. So it might be a little bit hard for you to see, but the red on this map, so the blue represents how Waste Management will circulate through the site in order to pick up trash on trash days. The red boxes, if you will, signify the actual totes and where they will be located on trash day. We proposed to Waste Management that on trash day, so there will be a sign in those parking spaces on the end caps of each of the units that will say "No Parking on Trash Day." So that will be enforced by the HOA, so that those parking spaces can be used for the totes on trash day. So residents will have to drag their individual totes out to those parking areas. Waste Management will come on that day, pick up the trash, and then they'll be able to take their totes back to their units at the end of the day, and those will then be spaces available for the residents during the day. Does that help answer your question, Commissioner Preston?
Thank you.
Sure. I, I wanted to just touch on a couple other things that you all mentioned, if you don't mind. You asked about whether the units would be individually metered, and I can't, I apologize, I can't remember which commissioner asked that question. But yes, they will be individually metered. D.R. Horton has done a number of projects in this community, and so they, they are familiar with the design and the requirements for those. So I wanted to just reiterate for you that we do intend that these units to be individually metered. I also wanted to just touch a little bit on the private versus public open space. Heather, could you go back to one of the, maybe the color site plan? I think it's near the front. There we go. I just wanted to point out, just because you had asked, I think Commissioner Crone, about the open space, you know, we, we took a lot of sensitivity to providing a park in this area. So it's not just units. There on the south end of, of this parcel, we've provided an actual parklet, if you will. It's not a, it's not a very big park, but it is a place where the residents within this community can go. There will be benches and tables and a pet waste area, so that folks can take their pets out there and let them, you know, enjoy the green area. We've talked about providing access through that area into the shopping center next door, so that residents in this community don't have to get in their car and drive to the adjacent grocery store, so they can be able to walk there. So we've really taken, I think, you know, a lot of thought into this layout that, again, is different than the apartment project. It is half of the impact of the apartment project that was previously approved here. The traffic is nearly half of the trips generated as a result of this project opposed to the apartment project. So I'm, I'm, I'm very sensitive to the pedestrian connection and the circulation on this, as well as just bringing a good project to the neighborhood. I, I don't know if you guys have other questions for me, but those were just a couple of things you had asked staff I wanted to cover.
Let's see. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have, and I'm, I'm sure it's not exact, but do you, do you have a range of anticipated price points for the units?
I do not yet. We could speculate, but I, I wouldn't want to do that at this point.
But they are market rate units?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With these kind of developments, these questions always pop up, not only garbage, but snow removal. So it's going to come up.
I have a slide.
Like towards the ends of the driveways. You know, they will have to pull those totes, the length of that, out to the pickup points. So coordination of snow removal before trash day might be pretty important.
Yes. Commissioner Peterson, I appreciate, again, the question. Again, because I've, I've heard these conversations before. We worked, again, with D.R. Horton to identify some locations for, for snow storage within the site, because it's so small, and we, we wanted to be conscious of that. So on this exhibit that you see on the screen now, those areas in blue are identified for snow storage on snow days, and we will, you know, the HOA for this community will be responsible for that snowplow, because these streets in this are, are private, so they, they will be responsible for that. And, you know, we will, they will do their best to do it before trash day, but we can't always control the weather, so. But we have thought about it, and so, you know, I think.
Looks like you have a plan. That's a good thing. That's a start.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm glad you have a plan. We're finally making an impact. People are worrying about garbage and snow. Your HOA, and this really is none of our business, but the question is, we've been wrestling with, is whether or not you're going to allow short-term rentals in these properties. And our definition of a short-term rental is less than 28 days.
Chair, boarders, I don't have the answer to that, but I am sure that D.R. Horton will take that into consideration as their legal counsel drafts the CCNRs.
Well, I, we don't want 69 Airbnbs.
Understood.
And I also noticed that the, the gate to Glen Eagles is not there anymore either. In several previous iterations of this project, there was a gate to Glen Eagles through the back of the property.
I do not recall a gate with the apartment project. I, I process.
It was a one-to-four yours.
Okay. But I.
You're, you're not the first one to try and do something with this.
Okay, great. I, I do think we are still providing access through the back of this, that it would not eliminate access to Glen Eagles.
Commissioner Preston?
Hi. I just wanted to put it on the record, or give you the opportunity to put it on the record, about the street frontage parking on G.S. Richards Parkway and the parking that's on Ivy Baldwin, the circle. Because I do know that the prior project was looking at as possible overflow. And that was one of the things that, that the neighbors and the other property owners were very, very concerned about.
I, I appreciate the question. We do anticipate utilizing some of that on-street parking for this project, primarily because of the design of these units. Maybe, Heather, could you go to the architecture slide? It might help a little bit, somewhere in the higher. Maybe, maybe that other one you had was fine. Yeah. So if you aren't familiar with how these units work, I'll just take a minute and explain. The way the units will face G.S. Richards will be that front door, right? So what you see in that bottom picture is facing G.S. Richards. The garage will face the street interior. So we would anticipate that when guests come to visit residents living in these homes, they may park along G.S. Richards to easily get into those units to, to visit with, with their friends. So I anticipate that we will use those on-street parking spaces that are available along that street.
Stephen, how wide is G.S. Richards? Is it 60 feet?
I, I don't remember the width off the top of my head, but we did during our review measure the width to confirm that it meets our current standard for parking on one side.
Okay. But then if, if this is approved, then there could be no parking on the other side?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Public comment? Would you, would you please sign in?
Heather Coe. There are so many elderly people that live in Silver Oaks that walk their dogs. I've already watched one man almost get run over. His dog died. I have almost been run over so many times. We have the college. There's a median right there. The traffic would be horrific. I, I can't even imagine what the traffic would be like, okay? And the other thing is, you're asking questions about garbage. What if there was a fire or an emergency? Can ambulances get through? Can a fire truck get through? These are questions that you guys aren't even asking. Silver Oaks, none of this fits in. Not this mass-density stuff. And it will be so congested, it's ridiculous. I have a real issue with that kind of stuff. And I have a real issue with the radon, and the more you build, the more it moves. We never had it in our area for a very long time, because, well, we used to get testing, and now. and now we don't, thanks to our mayor and the board of supervisors. But I will say this, my entire neighborhood and the street over have all had to have our homes mitigated. So I will be going around personally to every person in my area to make sure that they get their homes tested and who's responsible for this. But the other thing is, I'm wondering where the water is gonna come from. I mean, we just had a mayor and a board of supervisors say that we had 270 trees that they just took down that were diseased, yet Curtis Horton said at the Chamber of Commerce, not that they just didn't want to waste the water on them, so they turned off the irrigation. I would like consistency just once in a while, and, you know, this will devalue the rest of the homes there, and I find that to be a huge problem. This is one thing after another. It's zoned for commercial, and I believe that that's how it should stay. And I'm not the only one concerned. So if you're going to take this into consideration, what is going to happen with all that traffic, with the college right up there? And then we have Ormsby Rehab. There are fire trucks and ambulances that go back and forth, nonstop, between the senior center at the bottom, that's across from Save Mart, and the one at the very top, which is Ormsby Rehab on College. There's a medium in between there. I don't know how, if there was an emergency, what would happen with all this congestion? And it terrifies me. It also terrifies me that no one's done anything with proper lighting or some undulations. Anyways, because of the college, the traffic is already getting horrific, and now we have all the other apartments going in. So I would just like someone to come up with a solution to keep citizens safe.
Thank you. Sign in? Any other public comment? Okay. Commission, comment?
I just, Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, when I saw this one come up, I was very pleased because when we passed the original applicant, there were a couple of concerns that came up from the public. One was they didn't appreciate the elevation of the earlier applicant, and this one is more fitting with what we heard from public comment, that it fits into the area better. Obviously, the lower density, pleased with that. They're keeping up with their contribution to the intersection improvement and to waste the sewer. And I think the other thing that I liked about this one was, they have been listening, as we just heard from the applicant. They pay attention to all of our meetings and what we have been stating our concerns from the public. These aren't ones we dreamt up, they're ones we heard from the public. So I feel very comfortable with this project, and I'll be a yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for staff or the owner's representative, whoever's best qualified. In going through this document, in Section 4, there's a traffic impact study. I cannot, for the life of me, find it. I'm wondering if perhaps staff can indicate what the anticipated number of trips are and how that compares to the current level of service out there.
Commissioner Brooks, I know Stephen's about to answer your question, but per our conversation with the chair, we're not providing the impact reports to the commissioners, but they are available if you want to see them in the office.
Okay.
I'm sure Stephen will answer your question.
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I could dig that up. However, it is a decrease in the number of trips from the original approval.
Commissioner Presell?
Yeah, just a quick question. Mahala, these are two separate applications. Do we have to do two separate motions?
Yeah, thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Chair Boarders?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant actually has the traffic information available, if you'd like to get it on the record.
Sure. That'd be fine.
Commissioner Brooks, Stacy Huggins, again, for the record. I think that this slide will help answer your question. So the apartment project, previously approved, had estimated 1,216 average daily trips. This project, with the reduced number of units, is approximately 651 average daily trips. Does that answer the question that you were looking for? Aside of the fact that you wanted the full traffic study, I apologize, but.
No, no. You know, ask a nerd question, get a nerd answer, right? No, I'm interested in the data you provided. I'm also interested in the second bullet I see up on the screen there with the level of service. So thank you, that does answer my question.
Okay, great.
Yes?
Before you run off, before you run off, okay, and maybe you can help me understand this. You know, these are good numbers. We're seeing a decrease, obviously. But if I were to stand out on that intersection, or sit in my chair, for example, at that intersection, how many cars would I go see go by in an hour? I don't know, maybe you can't answer that. I know that's not the way the engineer world works, okay? But if I were to sit there, how many cars would go by? I mean, we've got a concern from the public that this is an excessive amount of traffic that's gonna be generated. So I'm just trying to get from a, very much of a non-engineering perspective, how many cars, if I stood at that intersection with my dog, how many cars would I see go by in an hour?
Commissioner Cron, I suspect that the traffic study has that in there. Because we go out, right? We actually put counters on the road, and they count trips for 24 hours, nonstop, and that data is included in detail in those traffic studies. I'm not a traffic engineer, and I didn't stay at a holiday in last night, so I can't even pretend to be one, but that data is in there. But I don't know the answer to your specific question about how many cars you would see.
Okay. That's all right. It's just a way to help me, maybe the public grasp, you know, when people start saying, you know, there's this huge amount of traffic that's gonna happen. Well, okay, then, how much? And again, I'm not an engineer, I don't exactly know what 651 ADPs really represents in standing at the corner counting cars go by. Mr. Patel, can you give me that answer?
So the 51 PM peak hour trips, that represents 51 trips being generated in the peak hour. So throughout the day, traffic oscillates, that's the peak in the PM, is that 51. So if you were in your chair for an hour, you'd probably see one car a little less often than one per minute.
One per minute. Okay, thank you.
The conditions of approval all go with the special use permit? Since we have two motions, I'm not sure how to handle the conditions.
Oh, I see. I think for both motions, you can make a, why don't you make a motion on the special use permit first, with the special use permit conditions that are listed in 1 through 5?
Through 6?
1 through 6.
Yeah.
And then with the tentative map, as recommended and modified.
All right. Somebody want to try that?
I'll give the first one a go. For, let's see here, make sure I'm on the right spot here. Okay. Motion. I move, I move to approve LU 2025-0309 based on the ability to make the required special use permit findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report.
Thank you. Sir's second?
I second.
There he is. Commissioner Peterson's second. Any further discussion? Excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Now, did your motion include the omission of condition number 5?
Yeah, the motion was acceptable.
Now we need a motion for the last piece. Go ahead.
I move to approve, recommend approval of SUB 2025-0308 for the commissioner supervisors. Based on the ability to make the required, subject to not finding the subject of approval included in the staff report, I'm going to use condition 27. The state that prior to the issuance of the first site improvement permit and each final map, the applicant shall demonstrate that lots were onsite, cannot be accommodated by the driveway, only available by the garage, that a restriction be recorded on these lots by no technical plan noted on the final map disclosed to buyers disclosing that the garages must not be used for storage and must accommodate vehicles.
I second.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner DeChristopher, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Hope, you're up.
Okay, so we'll start with the monthly report that McKenzie does such a great job with. We have some extra slides for you tonight. So McKenzie's watching, so we'll give her the shout-out. We like to do that. So as of August 25th, the valuation of permits for the month were about $14 million, a little higher than that. Valuations year-to-date, $169 million. We had 29 housing starts this month as of August 25th. Those houses are, we have some Moren Anderson Ranch, Plateau Development, some stuff going on in Lampa, and we had eight multifamily, and that was the Stafford Way Apartments. You all saw that a couple times, they broke ground and they got their permit, so you will not see it again. And as of August 25th, 417 housing starts in 2025. This is a slide we don't usually include, but we included today so that you could see where the year-to-date valuation fit in, in total valuations over the last, say, six years. And you'll see at this point in 2025, and we're not at year-end, we've exceeded the assessed value that was realized in 2021. We also included this slide, which we typically wouldn't give you, just so you can see how the housing starts are tracking based on about a 21-year scale. And so we are, we have, particularly with the apartments at Stewart and William, we have a lot of development in 2025. You know what you did tonight, so I won't review that. In terms of code enforcement, there were 87 cases opened in August as of the 25th, 125 cases closed. We're also proactively enforcing weeds, signage, and street-side vendors. So we did open eight weed cases, 15 illegal signs, we issued six parking tickets, and we towed four RVs. Terms of liquor licenses, we issued three new liquor licenses, Dark Corner, and that's a vendor who's doing events at the old prison, so like the Haunted House and stuff, so they are obtaining, they have obtained a liquor license. Home to Sweets, which is the new hotel up north, and Franco Wine. We also authorized a new liquor manager for Walgreens. In terms of business licenses, 51 business licenses were issued, including Sprouts. So that will be opening, I think they're having their opening September 5th. Oh, it's Friday? Friday.
Friday.
Okay. Upcoming events, we had the Planning Commission meeting tonight, of course. We're having a community meeting on the proposed update to both the building code and the fire code. That meeting will be on September 3rd at 3:30 at the hub. Also on September 3rd is the Historic Resource Commission, so I'll be over at the hub, and Heather will be over here for the Historic Resource. On September 24th, you'll have your next Planning Commission meeting, so now you'll have the fence, of course. I'll talk about other things you'll have. In terms of special events, August 29th is the Latino Fest. It's the first year they're doing this, so it's kind of exciting over at Fuji Park. The Silver State Art Festival will be on September 5th at Fuji. The Cornhole for Cause, an annual event that's done in the Third Street parking lot, will be on September 12th. And Sasebration is moving from Sasefras over to Brewery Arts, and that will be on September 13th. On September 20th is the Bowtie Show and Shine at Mills Park. September 20th, the airport will have its annual open house and aviation festival. And September 26th is the annual AKC Dog Show over at Fuji Park. Let's see, also under my report, before I get to future agenda items, we did have our listening tour for the post-master plan adoption. We had three sessions, so thank you to everyone who was able to participate in that. Really, each session was really different, so it was interesting. We were there, but we didn't know what the audience would bring, and they all brought something a little bit different, so I think it was positive. I do have two requests. They didn't come through the listening session, but they did come in to review the land use designation on the master plan, so I'll formally bring that to you next month. Also, next month in September, again, you'll have that fence that you just continued. You'll have a special use permit for to install new generators at a cell tower over Sierra Highlands. You also will have a special use permit for short-term light and medium-duty truck rentals on North Carson Street, and you'll have a review of an abandonment of right-of-way between East 6th and Fall Street for a property on Fifth Street. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I have one comment. On-site premise signs that are multi-lit now and can cycle through.
Oh, okay, right.
When they start carrying advertising, are they no longer an on-premise sign and they become a billboard? Or do we define that yet?
Yeah. You'll recall that when we updated Title 18 and the Title 18 development standards, you did not touch Title, I think it's 4, which is the sign code. That's because about, I don't know, that's probably been six years ago now, Gilbert, Arizona, there was this Supreme Court case regarding regulating signs and the inability to regulate the content of a sign. And so the DA's office kind of put that to the side and needs to work on that. So I will not regulate the content of a sign. I can't. I can't mandate what messaging is. So I hear what you're saying. I can regulate size, I can regulate whether it's illuminated, I can regulate the location of it, and, but I don't believe I can regulate content.
Okay, so an on-premise sign?
Let's just leave it at that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Presell?
I just wanted to note that I won't be at the September meeting. And going back to your question, we had a significant fight when I was working with the City of Sparks in that regard that actually went through the courts. We got sued by a billboard company that was suing jurisdictions throughout the country with regards to whether or not you could determine what was an on-premise sign and off-premise sign, billboards. So it's, and the Arizona case is another one, it's just, you want to tread very carefully with signage, and it got to the point where, you know, the last place I worked, we didn't have a sign code. And while it tended to work out in a lot of instances, it's a very rural county, we did have, and the commissioners were okay with it, a gentleman who put his front loader on his corner lot and had a 4x8 piece of plywood with some verbiage sprayed on it, and we did not pursue it because it can be touchy.
Okay.
You gotta watch that.
Commissioner DeChristopher?
Yes, on behalf of St. Peters, I wanted to thank Heather Ferris and her team and the department heads that showed up for a major project review. When we sit on this side as commissioners, we hear about the benefits of the major project When we sit on this side as commissioners, we hear about the benefits of the major project reviews. It three-fold for me, after going through the process. We went in with certain impressions, and after having that discussion, which I think was 45, 60 minutes, we came out with more than one idea. And it was even to the extent that it helped us with our cost analysis. Not that they involved themselves with numbers, but it was finite enough that we were able to do that. And we just really appreciate it. I hope everyone in Carson realizes what a gem that is. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hope, I wanted to just thank you for putting together our meeting with the city manager today. It was, I thought it was a great discussion with him. And I thought we had a chance to share with him our thoughts and our concerns and get to hear a little from him. So thank you for putting that together.
Okay, you took my thunder.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? How about a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.